Good evening, everybody. This is the City Council meeting for July 20th, 2015. We'll go to Charlene for the roll call and determination of quorum.
Laurenti. Wright. Wyffenbach. Doyle. Estes. Lewis. Drew. Roberts. Nordstrom. Scott. We have quorum.
Okay, thank you. Next, we'll go to the invocation by Pastor Troy Carr from Faith Temple Church, followed by the pledge of allegiance. And for the invocation, you're welcome to participate, but not required.
I would just like to thank the mayor and the city council for allowing us to continue to have our prayer at our meeting, so thank you. Let us pray. Dear God, we thank you for this day. We thank you for life, health, and strength. God, I pray that you bless our mayor and city council, that you would give them the wisdom and strength to make decisions that are according to your will. I ask that you keep this city safe from evil. I ask that you would bless our governor, bless our president, and God bless the United States of America in Jesus' name. Amen. ... States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, now we'll go to the adoption of the agenda. Are there any changes or additions to the agenda?
Please adopt.
Second. We have a motion by Lewis, second by Scott. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Okay, on to awards and recognitions. Where did Jessica go? Oh, Jessica, would you like to come up? Now, we're going to award the Citizen of the Month Award for July 2015, and this is Jessica Crystal. Jessica was born April 29th, 1996, to Christie Franklin and Robert Crystal. She spent her entire 17 years of life in Rapid City. If you were to ask Jessica what her favorite thing to do is, it is to spoil the animals at the Humane Society of the Black Hills, and that she does. Since January, Jessica has logged in over 240 volunteer hours, walking dogs, cuddling cats, giving attention and love to every animal she comes into contact with. She is praised by those at the Humane Society for being one of those volunteers. You can ask to help out with any project, and she is right there, willing to give it her all. Jessica does all this volunteering, in addition to being a full-time high school student during the school year and a full-time employee in the summer months. Animals aren't her only passion. Her entire family is from the area, and she has been a dependable babysitter whenever she is asked. With 11 children under the age of seven -- that must be a typo.
No.
Between her two families, she stays busy. Jessica is in her third year in the Environmental Club, where they organize trash cleanups and hike together, learning about the area. It is also her third year volunteering for Terror in the Dark: Haunted House. Halloween is her favorite holiday, and she enjoys dressing up every Halloween night, scaring the willing participants. She also helps with setup and construction and breakdown every year. In addition, Jessica has been on the debate team the past two years, which found her traveling all over South Dakota, to Wyoming and to Colorado. She enjoyed the challenge of participating in the meets and getting to know the people from all over the area. This upcoming school year, Jessica will be a senior, taking two advanced classes and one college prep class. She's still trying to figure out her plans after she graduates. However, most that know her think it might have something to do with animals. Rapid City relies on valuable volunteers to make it a better place, and Jessica sets a good example to all of us, that anyone can volunteer at any age. We are lucky to have her as a volunteer, but more than that, Rapid City is lucky to have her as a future leader. We are grateful Jessica is a part of our community and are proud of the service she's done and continues to do. So, thank you, Jessica, and congratulations. Would you like to say anything?
Hi, guys. Every time I go in, she's always there, smiling, and it's really nice to see her familiar face, and Jackie, too. There's always Jackie there. So, thanks, guys, for being there.
Good job. Okay. Over here? I'd like to invite the Ward Three representatives to come down, and also Five? Is it Three or Five? Kim? Is it Three or Five? Ward Three, Dr. Kim Mori. In partnership with the Veterans Coordination Commission, we are pleased to present the July 2015 Veteran of the Month recognition to Kim Mori. Kim graduated from Fort Wayne, Indiana's Northside High School in 1971. Sounds tough, "Northside High School." And faced the two options most young men faced at that time, college or the draft. College wasn't an option for various reasons, so he decided to join the service and choose his fate. At the time, the Coast Guard wasn't taking anyone, and the Navy recruiter wasn't encouraging, so he chose the Air Force. Kim planned to get some good, high-tech training and come back home to work with the IBM or Magnavox plant where the good jobs were in Fort Wayne. After basic training, he got his guaranteed training in electronics as a B-52 Defensive Fire Control Systems Operator, also known as a B-52 Gunner. At the end of his first enlistment, Kim had flown 70 combat missions over South Vietnam, North Vietnam, Laos, and Cambodia. He was also well-trained in the maintenance and operation of radar and computer-controlled defensive aerial gun systems. In the summer of 1975, he decided to re-enlist. Kim first came to Rapid City in 1978 and continued to serve as a B-52 Gunner at Ellsworth until he completed his bachelor's degree at Black Hill State College in 1981. With that degree, he was selected to go to Officer Training School and was trained as a Titan II Missile Launch Officer, assigned to the Davis-Monthan Air Force Base in Tucson, Arizona. He returned to Ellsworth in 1984, at his first opportunity, and served as a Minuteman Missile Launch Officer. He obtained his master's degree in Business Administration from the University of South Dakota in 1987. Then, in 1988, he switched from missile operations to missile maintenance. He completed his military career in that field when he retired in December of 1991. Over the course of his 20-year career, Kim was decorated six times for gallantry, valor, and exceptional service, both in combat and peacetime, and received numerous awards and decorations for marksmanship, academic accomplishments, and job performance. He never did get back to one of those good jobs at IBM or Magnavox. Since retiring, Kim has been a business professor at Black Hill State, administrator at Western Dakota Tech, and held various jobs in between. He obtained his doctorate degree in education from USD in 2009. He has volunteered at his daughter's schools, his church, the Rapid City Chamber of Commerce, and with many other civic and nonprofit organizations, serving Rapid City, the region, state, and nation. Currently, Kim serves as the Treasurer of Historic Rapid City, the Chair of the Highmark Credit Union Board of Directors, President of the Ellsworth Heritage Foundation, and is active with the Black Hills Veterans Writing Group. To Kim, family is more important than the previous accolades mentioned. He married Rose Rangel in the spring of 1999. They have three daughters, one a Coast Guard veteran, three grandsons, with one more arriving this November, and one princess granddaughter. Some live here, some live elsewhere, but they all know Rapid City is home. Kim Mori served our country with dedication and sacrifice, making him an excellent Veteran of the Month. His example of service makes him deserving of this honor, and we would like to extend our gratitude. Thank you.
There are just a couple of observations I'd like to make about veterans as I know them, and one is that almost all of us don't particularly appreciate being singled out for things, good or bad. And I would say, all of us really believe that those who serve deserve recognition of some sort. So, for that reason, I'll allow myself, or I'm allowing myself, to be singled out, not for the recognition of me, but for the recognition of all of the veterans, who I believe all deserve this. So, thank you.
Kathy, would you like to come up? Now, we're going to award our Yard of the Month, and Kathy Robison will present this.
Thank you. The Yard of the Month is part of the City Beautification Committee. We recognize and promote the enhancement of personal property within the city of Rapid City. Suzanne Carl is the July winner, and if you ever, if you had an opportunity to go buy her house on cruise this spring, the spring flowers were absolutely phenomenal. And she is a garden club member, she is a master gardener, she's into an awful lot of things, and I also consider her a good friend. The Beautification Committee awards her a certificate, as well as a window sign that she can put in for the Yard of the Month, and also she receives a $25 gift certificate from Plant Smith that was given to, donated through another gift certificate from Modern Woodsmen. So, congratulations.
I don't really know what to say. I just want to say thank you. Gardening is my passion and has been for a long, long time, and it's a little distressing to me to see the lack of gardening of any kind that goes on in people's houses. You know, you're lucky if they cut their grass around here. And I do understand that it is very, very difficult, because everything requires water and it's, and a lot of work, and I just love, love, love doing it. So, if you ever want to come by Cruise Drive, my neighbors all say that since I moved in, we have a lot more traffic on the street, because people drive by my house just to watch the flowers change all the time. So, anyway, thank you, everybody. I really appreciate it.
Yeah, we're good. Thank you. So, tonight, we're going to do a, Susan? A special recognition to Rhonda Graham, who is a Ward One constituent. And one of the things I really detest in the world today is social media. I mean, it just, you know, people react, and they say horrible things and do horrible things to one another, and I got to witness, on a break from work, someone use it for good, sitting out in my flower garden, which is also blooming all the time, and my neighbor came over and started, and she was just fresh off of a vacation, and started this little, I guess, mission while she was on vacation. And I'll read the recognition in a moment, but I'm going to tell you, for this woman to take time out of her family vacation, were you in San Diego? In San Diego, to be the conduit for this story, I just thought was very rare, very rare, in the day and age that we live in. So, she used the power of Facebook to reunite a stolen dog to its owner. Daisy is an eight-year-old Shih Tzu who is partially deaf. She got loose and ran off on June 6th, near East Minnesota and Elm Street in Rapid City. Daisy was picked up by a family who saved her from getting run over, but then claimed her as their own, and didn't make any effort to contact owners or contact the Humane Society, even though she was wearing a red collar, a green tag, she had identification. She's microchipped, so they could have found the owner if they had tried. Rhonda posted a very clever post on Facebook, from the perspective of Daisy, asking for anyone's help in reuniting her to her dad, who is all by himself and was absolutely distraught over this, an elderly gentleman. Thanks to social media, someone saw the pictures that people had posted of their new dog and turned in Daisy. The Rapid City Police Department worked along with someone on Facebook. They got Daisy back to original owners, and it just, it worked out. So, Daisy is now back home with her rightful owner, and they have Rhonda Graham to thank. And by the way, she was in hospital all day and still came here to accept this, so thank you, Rhonda.
Thank you. Animals are actually my job and my life, so I will do anything to help animals and their owners, to reunite them, or even to find animals good homes when families can't actually take them. So, I guess I'll just keep doing that. Thank you.
Now is the time we're going to go into executive session for a few minutes. Have a motion from Charity Doyle, and a second from Scott. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. Be a few minutes, ladies and gentlemen. Okay, I have a motion and a second. Come out of executive session. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, under staff direction, we have item number four, authorize a mayor and finance officer. Item number four, to authorize a mayor and finance officer to sign a agreement between the city of Rapid City and DTH LLC regarding Rainbow Ridge Development. Do I have a motion?
Motion to authorize.
Doyle with a motion to authorize, and Scott, second. All in favor? Those opposed, say no. Motion passes. Oh, I'm sorry. One abstention. Councilman Brad Estes has abstained from the vote due to a possible conflict of interest. Now, we're on to general public comment. A time for the members of the public to discuss or express concerns to the council on any issue not on the agenda. Action will not be taken at the meeting on any issue not on the agenda, except by placement on the agenda by unanimous vote of the council members present. So, I have two speaker requests for general public comment. The first is Scott Glasgow. And sir, I'll remind you, you have three minutes.
My name is Scott Glasgow. I live at 127 Mead Street. Mayor, city council members, thank you for hearing me today. I'm approaching this code issue. I approach this code issue trying my best to understand policy and procedure for the necessary change. I apologize for any confusion in presenting the issue. I'm no lawyer, but I'm learning. It doesn't cost anything, and it can be as easy as one sentence without touching the sacred livestock ordinance, one sentence modeled after an animal ordinance that has been in city code for 24 years. Some have suggested for me to start a petition. It shouldn't have to come to a public vote, to have at least six fair and impartial elected officials to vote for a simple solution to this issue. I look forward to interacting with you, and thank you for your time. You know who, and you know why, and this is the easiest way how. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And now, Pepper Massey from the Rapid City Arts Council.
Good evening. Thanks for your time tonight. I was going to do a quick update on the Rapid City Cultural Plan. Just as a reminder, the Rapid City Arts Council is facilitating the plan on behalf of the city. To date, we have conducted nine focus groups. There is a listing of the focus groups that we organized. All of the focus groups, except for two of them, have been conducted by the steering committee members, so they've been very involved in it. We're also releasing a survey, which are the six questions that were being discussed in the focus groups, and we're encouraging people in the community to respond if they weren't able to attend the focus groups. We want to hear their input. Again, it is a very broad plan. We want as much community input on the plan as possible. This is the information gathering portion of the cultural plan, and what we're seeking is people's opinion, what they think the assets and deficits are, excuse me, with regards to arts and culture in our community. We will find four to six areas of focus from those comments and that input, and create task forces that will work on resolving those issues for the city. And then, of course, we will bring that plan to the city council for your approval, and we're still hoping that's going to be in the January, February timeframe. We do have a public meeting that we're going to be scheduling in September. We'll be sending out a release on that, so hopefully, people will be informed about it, and we're hoping many people will come and participate in that as well. And then, we have a follow-up steering committee shortly after, a couple of days after. The planning consultant is coming back in September for both of those meetings. for both of those meetings. Did anyone have any questions? Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Now we're on to the non-public hearing items, items five through 51. We'll open public comment on items five through 47, and we have two speaker requests. First one on item number 28. Eric Hykes? Hykes, I'm sorry. A sustainability committee.
Good evening, mayor and council. Eric Hykes, 1115 West Boulevard. Chairperson of the Sustainability Committee. I have this thing about microphones. It makes my lungs constrict, so I'm allergic to them. So it's my hope that we get to present our annual report to the council. I noticed that the way that we're on the agenda is that we acknowledge their annual report, and if it so pleases the council, we table and maybe move it to the next council meeting so that we can present the report. We need your feedback on a few things, and maybe even a decision or two on the direction for the committee over the next two years. So I'm asking for a little more than acknowledgement, I guess, is my bottom line. That's all.
Thank you. The next speaker request form is from Steve Winia, item number 35.
Good evening. First off, congratulations to newly-elected Mayor Allender, also newly-elected council members. My name is Steve Winia. I've owned and operated businesses in Rapid City for 30 years. Commercial rentals, lottery casinos, other businesses. Over the past 20 years, I have purchased five video lottery slash malt beverage licenses. Currently, I have three approved locations, approved by council, lottery locations. There are no lottery licenses slash malt beverage licenses available. There are, I believe, five inactive. I've contacted all the inactive license holders. Every one of them I called. Okay. Carolin's, Shooter's, MG Oil, Carousel, Shenanigans. I've talked to every one of them. We didn't even get to the point of asking, talking price or numbers, just not interested. So contrary to belief, there are no lottery licenses available, other than the people that have them, that's it. I'm building new buildings to locate these casinos in, and you know, if I'm not able to get the city to release some of these 17 licenses, I will not build them. I mean, I have to have my own business in them to make it viable, economically viable, to build these buildings. I believe this is the time to release more lottery malt beverage licenses, any way the council sees fit to do so. There's parameters set up to do this through a lottery system. It was set up by Mayor McLaughlin, Ed McLaughlin, 22 years ago, I believe. The city is currently holding, has availability to distribute 17 lottery malt beverage licenses. I'm asking you, please allow me to have three of these available licenses at this time. You know, I've been doing business in this city for a lot of years, a lot of businesses, a lot of taxes I've paid, and I think this is probably the time to have the lottery system and release these licenses. I thank you for your time, and I'll be around for questions if you would like to pull this item. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. There are no further speaker request forms, so we're on to the public comment will be closed. So now we're on to consent items, items five through 47. Would the council like to pull any of these items? Charity Doyle?
Thank you, mayor. Item number 28, please.
Ron Wyffenbach?
Items 26 and 27, please.
Okay, seeing no further lights. Can I have a motion to approve consent items five through 47, with the exception of 26, 27, and 28? Motion by Lewis and a second by Nordstrom. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, say no. If you're opposed, say no. Okay, item passes. Onto item number 26. Charity, read that in, please.
Thank you, mayor. Item number 26 is to authorize staff to advertise for bids for one end loader at an estimated cost of $280,000, and I yield the floor to Alderman Wyffenbach.
Ron Wyffenbach?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Alderman Doyle. If it was either number 26 or 27, I'd print it off, the information. I'd left it on my printer, but the question I have, I believe, is number 27, that I think after Alderman Scott had brought this up, we were going to outright purchase a front-end loader for, I believe it was like $370,000, but yet when we turned around, did the bid for him, we had a maximum of $280,000, and I'm trying to figure out why the $90,000 swing. Is it a different front-end loader, or is there a typo here?
Okay, let's go to Dale Tech.
Thank you, mayor. I believe it's a typographic error. The item 26 originally was to outright purchase a loader for $274,000, and then item 27 was a purchase of $374,000. They are different loaders. One is larger than the other, so I believe it's a typographical error for item 27. It should be $380,000 for the advertising authority.
Thank you. That was the only question I had.
Okay, Charity Doyle?
Then I'd like to make a motion to approve item number 26 and 27, if I may, with the correction of item number 27 being $374,000.
Okay, motion by Doyle and a second by Ron Wyffenbach to approve items 26 and 27. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Items pass. To number 28, Charity Doyle.
Thank you, mayor. Item number 28 is to acknowledge the Standing Committee on Sustainability Annual Report, and before a motion is made, I'd like to ask Mr. Eric Hykes some questions, if I may.
Okay.
Hi.
Yes, hi.
I'm trying to get some clarity in what you're asking. You don't, did you want to present this tonight, or you want some additional changes to the plan, and then you want to present it to council at a later date?
Present tonight, or I know you have a busy agenda, or continue this until the next council, and we can present at the next council meeting. So we'd like to present it.
Well, I've already spoken, so someone else will have to make that motion, but thank you for the clarification. I yield, mayor.
Okay, we'll go to Chad Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I make my motion to continue this to the next council meeting.
Okay, a motion by Lewis and a second by Wyffenbach to move this to the next council meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. All right, motion passes. This takes us on to the non-consent items, items 48 through 51. We'll open public comment on items 48 through 51. I see there are no speaker request forms, so we'll close public comment and go to item number 48. Can I have this read in by Amanda Scott, please?
Thank you, mayor. Item number 48 is the first reading of ordinance number 6065, an ordinance to add bed and breakfast facilities as a conditional use to the Park Forest Zoning District by amending section 17.08.030 of the Rapid City Municipal Code. I make a motion to approve.
Okay, the motion to approve by Amanda and the second by Jerry Wright. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion passes. Item number 49.
Item number 49 is a request by Fisk Land Surveying and Consulting Engineers, Inc., for a preliminary subdivision plan for property generally described as being located at 7344 Norseman Lane. I make a motion to approve with stipulations.
Okay, the second by Richie Nordstrom. And all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Okay, motion passes.
Item number 50 is a request by Dream Design International, Inc., for a preliminary subdivision plan for property generally described as being located west of Elkvale Drive and south of Eglin Street. I make a motion to approve with stipulations.
Okay, second by Brad Estes. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion passes. Item 51.
Thank you, mayor. Item number 51 is an audit report of the City of Rapid City, the 2014 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, or the KAFR, and this was forwarded without recommendation. I believe there's a presentation.
Tracy Hanson from Cato Thorstensen is here, mayor.
Okay.
Good evening. We started the audit back in April and May of this year, and that was about roughly two months ahead of where we've been the last several years. So from the standpoint of preparedness of the city for the audit this year, much improved in terms of the schedules that were ready, in terms of just overall, a lot of the processes were done much sooner than they had been in the past. We still had a couple of issues along the way, but much improved, as we'll get to in a moment. Big picture, just for your benefit to understand the differences between either accounting standards or audit standards from a year ago, basically nothing changed. Our audit standards were consistent with a year ago. There were no new additional governmental accounting standards since last year, so financially, the presentation required for the city was the same. If you did look through the financial report this year, there is disclosures that there are upcoming accounting standard changes, but those will impact future years. Overall, then, we took a look at different parts of the city as we always do, whether it be the depreciation, allowances, we take a look at your debt covenants, and then, of course, compliance with your federal programs. We audited four major federal programs this year, and that's all based on our audit standards in terms of which ones we select. And then, as a result of the overall audit process, we issued an unmodified opinion. That is what the city wants to receive from the standpoint that we are saying that, in all material respects, the city's financial statements are fairly presented. Okay? From the standpoint of the city's internal controls and findings or issues that we came across during the process, we did have a few findings. The first finding relates to the city's internal controls as it relates to the financial statement preparation. As I mentioned, there were significant improvements made during the year. That was due to various finance personnel's efforts. Specifically, Dave Uhas had a lot of efforts this year to make sure that things were done sooner than they had been. More was done by him, more prepared in general. But in the end, we still got the financial statements towards the end of the audit process, which wouldn't be ideal, so we'll work on that going forward. Pauline didn't get the opportunity to review them as timely as we would have hoped. It came towards the end of the process after we'd received the financials, so we're suggesting that those could still be improved. From a segregation of duties standpoint, we're looking at who reviews what, and does somebody have too much control in a certain process? With the assistant or the deputy finance officer's position, there is still a little bit too much that that position has responsibility for and leaves the city susceptible, and that's a consistent comment with a year ago. Nothing has changed in that arena. I know that the city is also going through a software conversion, and part of that's balancing those demands with how to balance and change some of those duties around. The second finding relates to the fact that during the audit, we did make adjustments to correct some things. The number of adjustments from 2013's audit to 2014's audit substantially decreased by less than half of what we saw a year ago, so definite improvements there, but the finding was still there. We've issued a budgetary comment, and this would be the third finding that we had. State law basically says that the city cannot overexpend any specific expenditure to rely on them. The city does. There's a handful of them. It's consistently reported. Out of all the city audits that we do, I don't have a city that doesn't have this comment almost annually. It's just one of those things that states are stickler on, and so we report it. A year ago in 2013, we had a finding related to grant monitoring. That finding was not repeated in 2014. Your grants were very clean this year in terms of every document that we requested was there. All the information that we needed to find was in an organized fashion. We were able to get to the information we needed. So that finding was not repeated. That is a significant improvement and very good from the standpoint of the city. Those three findings that I mentioned, the internal controls, the audit adjustments, and the budgets, are all reported as, the term that's used is significant deficiency. I know that sounds bad, but last year, those were referred to as material weaknesses, which is actually worse. So the findings, not only did they reduce in quantity, but they reduced in severity, so that also was a positive. So we have submitted the final PDF version of the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. I understand that that will be submitted for certification here, actually today or tomorrow, in terms of to the GFOA. Like I said, we're basically two months ahead of where we've been the last several years. So overall, there's still some things to work on, but big picture, we saw significant improvement. So if there are no further questions, that's the extent of my reporting of the 2014 audit to you.
Thank you. We'll go to Amanda Scott.
Thank you, mayor, and thank you for the presentation, and thank you for reminding us a year later of the comparison from the 2013 to 2014. Sure. And then also, I'd just like to take this opportunity to thank the entire city staff for working on this and making these strides in correcting our major or minor deficiencies, as whatever they're called. So just kudos to the staff for continually working on it and working on that improvement. I know it's not just the finance office that works on improvements every single year, it's every single one of our departments. Thank you very much. I yield the floor.
Okay, now we'll go to Steve Laurenti.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Okay, second by John Roberts. Seeing no discussion. Item number 51. Oh, hold on. Go to Ron.
Thank you, Mr.
Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had questions at first. She answered my questions, which were awesome.
What's that?
You answered my questions that I had earlier, but I just wanted to say thanks to our finance staff for heading in the right direction. It's something that differentiates itself from the rest of our departments, and I sit on the compass committee, and I think that one of their original, what they wanted to do is exactly what you do, is have an outside source come in and say, listen, here's some opportunities for you. And so we, you know, we, every year, we squeeze the finance department to handle these deficiencies and stuff like that. So I just wanted to make that comment in reference to the report. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, seeing no further discussion. All those in favor of approving item number 51, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Item passes. This is going to take us to public hearing items, items 52 to 57. We'll open the public hearing on these items, and I have one speaker request form on item number 55 from Carol Pugh.
Good evening. I'm Carol Pugh. I own the Rose Building, which is located on the corner of Mount Rushmore and St. Joseph. Item number 55 is the assessment of the Business Improvement District. I'm here to ask, I guess, permission from the city council to have my parking lot in my building relooked at. I believe in 2006 and '07, when I was deployed, it was, the business district was set up into, you're either on number one or a number two, and I want to go to another number and have someone look at my property. It's not very clear how that process is to go, so I'm here looking for guidance. When I got the letter in the mail, this is the eighth year in a row that I've come to try to figure out how I can be re-quantified. You know, I am on the corner. I am butted up next to Wells Fargo Bank and Evergreen Office Products, who are zoned differently, so I guess I'm looking for some guidance. I did not speak to Pauline assumption, and the first step is to counter this meeting.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, seeing no more speaker request forms, we will close the public hearing and go on to the consent. Public hearing items 52 to 55. Does anyone want to remove an item? an item? Amanda Scott?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to remove item number fifty-five.
Okay. So, can we have a motion then to approve consent public hearing items? Several motions and seconds for fifty-two through fifty-four. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, those items pass. And we'll go on to item number fifty-five.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number fifty-five is a resolution, two thousand and fifteen zero five six B, levying the assessment for Downtown Business Improvement District, two thousand and fifteen. I'd like to make a motion to approve, but retain the floor.
Okay, we have a motion and a second?
Thank you, Mayor. May I just address a couple of questions to Pauline assumption based on the comments that were made during general, or during public comment?
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. Pauline, for clarification, I, I'm trying to get some clarity on, on what the petitioner was asking for. Is it, is it that she doesn't understand the distinction between zone one and zone two of the downtown business district, or is it that the two properties she mentioned, the Green, Green Office Products and Wells Fargo, or whatever those are, but, or are they outside the downtown business district, and she wants to be outside the downtown business district?
Those two businesses are inside the business district. There are two zones. When the original ordinance was passed, that was the concession made by the person taking the petitions around, that they would try and do two different zones, because to get more buy-in, the ones that were in the more core area, the downtown, basically, Fifth through Eighth Street, were, and I'm generally speaking, are zone one, and outside of that is zone two, because they're further away from the, the core, so they would probably see less benefit to, at the time, it was going to be Main Street Square. So, that's all set out in ordinance. Ordinance dictates who, what boundaries the TID as a whole is, as well as the, the different zones. Now, the difference in how they're billed, zone one is billed at a dollar fifty per thousand evaluation. So, any assessment for either zone is actually based on valuation that the county provides, and then zone two is seventy-five cents per thousand evaluation. There is a maximum dollar amount for any property, whether it's zone one or two. It would have to be a massive property in zone two to hit that. But, right now, I think it's like three thousand two hundred and fifty-three dollars and some odd cents. I couldn't, it grows three and a half percent every year, and it started out at three thousand dollars. So, wherever that makes us is, is where we're at now. But, it is all in ordinance. If the council wants to do something different, they would have to do an ordinance change at this point. And Wade can chime in. He, he's probably pretty familiar with this ordinance as well. But this, this ordinance is what was approved by the public when it went to a public vote, 'cause if you recall, it was actually referred to a public vote and approved. I think sixty-some percent approved it.
Thank you, Pauline. And would, would you mind approaching the podium? Yes. 'Cause I'm just trying to get you some clarification on, on, on the assessment. So, did that answer or give you some clarity as far as what the zoning?
Yeah, I guess I, I do understand the difference between zone one and zone two. I'm on the corner of Mount Rushmore and St. Joe. I do have a building on that corner, and the, the property next to is my parking lot. That is also zone two. So, how's my parking lot gaining help from Main Street Square? So, I guess that's my question, is, and I do know it's a zoning question. I have raised it. I was not, at that time, if it was taken to a public vote, you know, I was not here in the country in two thousand and six as its property owner, and I understand I'm being held, you know, to that zoning. So, I guess I'm gonna, you know, ask to be rezoned to, to, I, I don't see how my parking lot gains any business for being in zone two. You know, the difference in the distance is probably two parking stalls to Evergreen Office Products and to Wells Fargo Bank.
Ma'am, also, the, the downtown business, the Main Street Square was one of the main projects that was done under this?
Correct.
But there are, every year, the bid board comes up, and they decide on the projects that they're trying to benefit throughout there. So, it's not just the Main Street Square?
No, I understand.
Okay, okay.
Right, so I, so I guess I, I can, can further ask that everything that we have been sent as a business owner, the trash, or the plowing, or all of these extra incentives, they don't make it to my corner. They definitely don't make it to my parking lot. So, I guess if I need to keep track of what is my gain, I, I'm not gaining by being one, one block over. And definitely, my parking lot is not gaining any business interest to the projects of this business assessment. So, that's what, you know, that's what I'm bringing to their attention.
All right, and thank you, ma'am. So, Pauline, if, if a petitioner, anybody within the bid board, do they have to go back to the city attorney's office to, to redraw up the ordinance, or do they have any recourse whatsoever as far as?
Honestly, unless the bid boundaries are changed, they, and they don't mean any of the exemptions that are in the ordinance, 'cause they're, I know, like, if it's owner-occupied, it's exempt from the downtown bid. I can't do anything unless there's an ordinance change.
So, at this point, the petitioner would just have to take the ordinance and see if there was any way to, to
Somehow exclude her property.
Bring a recommendation to city council to relook at this or anything else?
Correct.
Without that, all the properties within the zone stay within the zone?
Correct.
So, ma'am, I, if you wanna pursue it, I, I would recommend you just
Absolutely. I, I understand that that, you know, is my course of action, and I, and that's the action I'll take. So, I understand that, you know, changing the zoning is one thing, but I think I was lumped in because no one knew where I was, or didn't ask. So, and, and I understand, 'cause I wasn't here. So, I'm not sure why. I was voted in that area.
If I might, the boundaries were actually drawn up by the petitioners, and that bounced between John Brewer, who was, I think, the president of the Downtown Association at the time?
Right.
And then Dan Sefner?
Right.
Ended up finishing the project. So, those boundaries were brought to us as a petition from the downtown businesses. We did not do any of the drawing of the boundaries.
Sure. So, can I ask, you know, do I have to ask, I believe Mr. Brewer is gone. Dan Sefner, you know, Mr. Brewer was fired. So, how do I, you know, if some other business drew the lines and gave them to the city, you know, do I need to go back and petition?
The Downtown, the Downtown Bid Board meets regularly?
Correct.
And I would recommend you start with the Downtown Bid Board?
Start there?
Because it's that organization that determines the projects that are gonna benefit from the taxes that are collected
Sure.
Based on that assessment, so.
So, I guess at this time, if I'm asking to levy of my assessment, you know, I, I don't want it, 'cause I don't think I was put in the correct zone.
And that won't be correct. This two thousand and fifteen levy will go through
Sure.
If it's approved tonight, so.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Build the floor.
Thank you. Now, we're gonna skip over a few people and go to the city attorney.
I just wanted to clarify that in order to change the boundaries of the bid district, it basically requires either, you basically start the process over. It's, it's basically set up so that it's difficult to decrease the boundaries. It's difficult to, to make a change for the reason that they have the power to bond, they have the power to incur some debt, and so it's, it's difficult to make a bid go away once it's done that. It's not impossible. It's, it's a lot easier to add territory. We do it with our hotel bid all the time. We add by resolution, and that's, that's because it expands the base, so that's, that's kind of a different story. But, when it goes to, to changing the boundaries, it, it basically record, requires a start from the beginning, a new petition, and go through the entire process.
Okay, thank you. We'll go to Brad Estes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mrs. Pugh, I have a question for the, Mrs. Pugh, if I could, please. So, your business, do you get notices for annual meetings and such?
I do not.
You do not?
No.
Well, I would sure check that, because I haven't read this, this specific ordinance, but as I understand how this works, is, I mean, I, the bid board, they meet regularly, but, but I believe they have an annual meeting, or, or as such, that everybody's supposed to get a notice to, where they, they, I mean, they set their budget, which then sets the levy. And I, and Pauline, when, when, she'd have to go to them to get any kind of relief within that organization. By the time it gets to us, I mean, they've, they've approved the budget, which, which establishes the levy. Is that true? And do, Pauline, do you know, do they, they, do they set this at an annual meeting where everybody's noticed, or?
I honestly don't know if everyone has noticed. I know, a couple of years ago, they're looking for projects to do downtown, and they sent out notices to everybody at that time to bring their ideas for it to the bid board, but other than that, I don't know if they get annual notices. Wade might know. For a while, his office staffed that as, for administrative purposes.
But I, certainly, I would, they could, would be nice to find out who, who did the mailing list, 'cause I, I'm
Absolutely.
I could be wrong, but I, I was pretty darn sure that, 'cause I had the person ask me about this last year, and I, and I guess, I thought all the members of the bid district were, were noticed of an annual meeting to set the, to approve the budget, so that the, then it could go onto the city, so that the levy could be established, so. And I, I could, I've been wrong more than once up here, but, but anyway, I, they could be, who's to ask Mr. Sefner, or whoever's the president of the bid board, to, to see if you can't get on that mailing list, 'cause as far as I, and I think I'm repeating what's already been said here, I think you've gotta go to the bid board for this relief, or start there. Thank you.
Right. I just, I, I said, I got the assessment, and it says, "Your meeting this evening. I have to come here." So, I just, I'm following the instructions, the only instructions that I've ever been getting, which is my tax bill. And I just am looking to try to make some sort of amends, because it's a parking lot.
Okay. But when, now, when you say tax bill, are you talking about?
This assessment. It's a, it's an assessment.
It's the bid board assessment tax?
That's correct. It says, "The property which you own abutting the project and liable for the assessment is follows: nine hundred and fifty-four dollars for my building, forty-eight dollars for the parking lot." And from what I understand, from the finance office, you know, this, two citizens went around and decided who was gonna benefit or not, and we were not part of that process. And now, I'm making an attempt to figure out how to make a change.
Thank you.
'Cause I
Thank you.
Now, we'll go to Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Excuse me, ma'am. I didn't catch your name, so I apologize for that.
Carol.
It, it's Carol Pugh.
Okay, Carol.
UGH is my last name.
What's the address of your building?
The address of the building is, the, the address for post office is six oh seven Mount Rushmore Road. The address for assessment is eight oh one and eight oh three St. Joseph. It's the corner of Mount Rushmore and St. Joseph. It's where Staple and Spice and the old State Farm businesses are located, and a parking lot, which is adjacent.
So, they have you in zone one?
That's correct.
Now, is your building separate from your parking lot?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
It is two, it is two tracks. It is, I, I'm always given two original town descriptions with one tax ID number.
So, they're, they're two different?
Yes, one is a building. One is thirteen thousand square foot of real estate. The other is the parking lot, which is a twenty-five stall parking lot adjacent to that building in between and where
They're separate legal entities?
That's correct. They have two legal descriptions.
Okay. And what, isn't one in zone one and then the parking lot in zone two?
No, both of them are in zone one.
I'm trying to look at it on
Sure, yeah. We went to try to look it up, and that's when I discovered that Evergreen Office Products is in two.
Yeah, I see that.
The alley and Wells Fargo Bank is in two, and I'm in one.
We're looking at it. It looks like they, for some reason, they kinda, somebody must have been here when they did this. I was here when we did this, and
Sure.
In fact, that was instrumental in getting them to do it into two zones, because the one zone was just way too much
Sure.
For the people on the outline areas, that you could see that there was gonna be no benefit in comparison to what you would get if you were immediately downtown, or I should say, limited benefit, not no benefit. But, it looks here like they kinda leapfrogged those two buildings right next to you, and went to zone one again on another building farther west.
That's it.
And I'm trying to
So, if, if that's, if you think the bid process is the where I need to go, it really can't seem to change, to change this. And if they do meet one, once a year, you know, I really do need to find out when that is, because this has been pretty much been going on since two thousand and eight. And I have to tell you, nine hundred and fifty-four dollars and forty-eight dollars is pales to my property tax. But, I, I have to tell you, they promise to do all these projects, as you had indicated, and I can tell you, now I'm keeping track. No one's plowing my parking lot. No one's doing anything to my sidewalk. I do now have recycling and trash in the front on the St. Joe side, only after getting them to come to the street. So, I think you get to that edge right there by Evergreen, and that's where the business district just about ends. And now, with the new Thursday night, Thursday, I guess, Thursday night event, the city cones the entire side of St. Joe. You can't get into my parking lot. You can't access my building. There's a middle street, and now there's the cones. So, if I were gonna have any incentive, it just was shut down with the cones, because now no one comes as soon as the street there on St. Joe is shut off.
Out of curiosity, what time do they put up the cones?
I believe they start, you know, I can get some guidance here, you know, three, four o'clock, and, and they start putting the cones up. My business and my tenants' businesses close anywhere from six to eight o'clock. And, you know, we wanna encourage people to come down to that event, but, but you, you are blocking me out. And now, the cone, the cone project, I would say, now that St. Joe and Seventh, it was just on Seventh, now the concerts there on Seventh and St. Joseph, you, you're blocking my business out at about four thirty. And, and we have started, these concerts just started, you know, the summer is only into their, I think, fourth or fifth Thursday. But, you know, when this arrives at my doorstep, it's like, you know, it's time to come to the city to ask, okay, my business, it's, it's closing, 'cause you're coning me out, and I'm paying the money.
And it's amazing what they charge you for asphalt parking, for taxes on asphalt.
That's correct. And now, and now, that asphalt is getting some sort of incentive of something, so I
I do know the bid doesn't, will not plow your parking lot. I don't think they include that
No, no. I believe they were taking the sidewalks. They were clearing the sidewalks, and they do clear the sidewalks, I believe, on Seventh. I've never, I, I have never seen them take them, take my corner, which is St. Joe and Mount Rushmore.
Mr. Mayor, I'm, I'm not sure who would give her guidance on what she would need to do to appeal this with someone. Do we have that resolved?
I think Darla Drew has the answer here.
Oh, okay. Then I'll just step out, and thank you.
What was the question? Excuse me?
Go ahead. You have, you have advice for her that's probably gonna answer this?
I do. I, I have served on the, as liaison from the council to the bid board for the last year, and they do meet monthly.
Okay.
Sandy Schwan is chair at this time. I don't know if that's changed, but she is, is the chair. And I think that you would be invited. You don't have to wait for an annual meeting. If you have a concern, I think that you should contact them and show up for a meeting. That's, that's my advice.
Okay.
You know, then, then you wouldn't have to wait till the end. They do have projects that are, you know, being discussed right now. They've just decided to redo all the tree grates on the sidewalks, so to get rid of those old iron
Right.
Iron plates that look really very worn out, very dated. A lot of them are broken, and so those will all be replaced. So, that will come into your area as well, whether in one or two. So, they're doing those from, for, for the entire, from East Boulevard to West Boulevard areas. A, a long-term lighting project is in the works, and I think that you'd just, you'd feel more comfortable with some of the decisions they're making if you were part of the process and came and talked to
Sure. I, I, just like you said, I'm trying to figure that out, and I've asked a lot of people, and no one really knows what it is, so.
I'll get your information. I'll, I'll, I'll get you the information you need to go to some of those meetings, okay?
Okay, thank you.
I yield.
Okay, now we're back to item number fifty-five. Do I have a motion? Lewis moves to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Oh, sorry. Okay, all in favor of item fifty-five signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say no? Item passes. Item fifty-six and fifty-seven, almost identical. Can you read those in?
Yes, Mayor. Item number fifty-six is a second reading of ordinance number six zero five eight, and ordinance amending section seventeen point zero six of chapter seventeen of the Rapid City Municipal Code. Rezoning the within-described property is requested by FMG Inc. for South Dakota School of Mines and Technology Foundation for a rezoning from general commercial district to high-density residential district for property generally described as being located at two seventeen and two eleven East St. Joseph Street. I make a motion to approve.
Second. Second. Okay, a motion and a second by Nordstrom. Seeing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Item passes.
Item number fifty-seven is a second reading ordinance number six zero five nine and ordinance amending section seventeen point zero six of chapter seventeen of the Rapid City Municipal Code. Rezoning the within described property is requested by F M G Inc. for South Dakota School of Mines and Technology Foundation for a rezoning from general commercial district to high-density residential district for property generally described as being located south of St. Joseph Street, east of Maple Avenue. I make a motion to approve.
Second. Okay, second by Richie Nordstrom. Seeing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Okay. Okay, now we're onto the bill list for July twenty, two thousand and fifteen. We'll go to the finance officer.
There are no changes to the bill list, so the total is that which is before you at four million, three hundred and ninety-four thousand, seven hundred and sixty-five dollars and seventy-nine cents.
Motion to approve by Laurenti and a second by Wright. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Now we're going to take a ten-minute recess and come back with a, the mayor's two thousand and sixteen budget presentation.
Can I get a motion to, uh? Motion by Richie, second by Laurenti to come back out of recess and at this time we'll turn the meeting over to Mayor Allender for his budget address.
Thank you. There we go. There we go. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I know you know this, but I'm going to restate this. Having a municipal election in June is a good idea financially because you get to group up on the primary election cycle and so you're not having two elections in one year and there's lots of justification for that. One of the downsides is when you have a new mayor, he's got days to catch up on a budget process that's been going on for months. Okay, so ninety-nine percent of this budget that's being presented to you and that you'll get transferred over to you for future budget hearings is the previous administration. I've just gone in here trying to understand the big parts of it, but I have not deconstructed and reconstructed this whole budget. So just taking a quick look at the population in Rapid City, we have fairly slow to moderate growth in our town from point nine percent growth to as high as one point eight percent growth, but since two thousand, we've had seventeen percent growth in population. So it's enough growth to demonstrate to us that it's worthy to, to manage the growth and to plan for future growth and that's part of what we are here for. And we'll move on to, of course, seventy, almost seventy-two thousand people now is the latest estimate and to provide services for this growing population, this is taking us seven hundred and seventy-seven point three nine full-time city employees. Here's how those employees are dispersed throughout the city workforce. By percentage, you can see where the city's priorities are when it puts its money where its mouth is. Thirty percent of the employees are in public works, followed by twenty for the police department, nineteen for fire, and then you can see all the other departments. So we're, we're into infrastructure and public safety being our two large categories, which I believe is as it should be. Here's the two thousand and sixteen budget philosophy. This is from me. This is what I believe we should be doing with our money. Each budgeted item contained in this budget should further one of the seven goals of the comprehensive plan. I'm going to show you those goals here in a second. The seven goals must be prioritized and balanced with constituent needs, wants, and also with common sense. Each of the seven goals must serve our citizens and meet with their implied approval. I say implied approval because as you know, you don't get contact with a hundred percent of your constituents. You hear from both ends of the spectrum sometimes and so there's a certain amount of guesswork in how to provide the best services and the best living environment for our seventy-two thousand citizens. And also the budget must be balanced. Overall, throughout this budget presentation, which really is going to be relatively short, it's about seventeen Overall, throughout this budget presentation, which really is going to be relatively short, it's about seventeen slides. I'm gonna, I'm gonna leave you with this. I believe, my personal opinion, is that Rapid City has a revenue problem, not a spending problem. And those are two different things. We've, we've done, year after year, we've done more with less, more with less. And I think if we were to follow the seven goals laid out in the comprehensive plan, I think we would give attention to that revenue problem and increase revenue through smart growth and managed growth. So here are the seven goals. A balanced pattern of growth. A vibrant, livable community. A safe, healthy, inclusive, and skilled community. Efficient transportation and infrastructure systems. Economic stability and growth. Outstanding recreational and cultural opportunities and responsive, accessible, and effective governance. These seven core values have been identified through community forums and leadership groups. These groups articulated the community's vision and provided the basic organizing structure of the plan. The core values are built on past and present city efforts, including the budgeting for outcomes process and the Vision 2020 strategic plan. Priority-driven budgeting will put a number of value on each of these proposed projects to tie into the seven core values identified in this. So that'll answer a question that seems kind of vague at the moment. What type of budgeting are we doing for two thousand sixteen? I know that the council has asked for the budgeting for outcomes indicators. And I'm just viewing us being in transition between budgeting for outcomes and priority-based budgeting. So this is an in-between year where we're, we're going to shift focus. So I'll move along. We have our projected, oh, here's something I want to share with you. Items of interest. These are things that are going to draw attention in this budget presentation. Things that are not going to be seen positively by everyone involved. And I just wanted to bring them out in the open and share them right now. In this two thousand sixteen proposed budget, Compass is not funded. Aside from not receiving budget requests until a couple of months after the deadlines, there is a general assessment that Compass has done far less for the city than what it was projected to have done on its onset. And I think Compass was a great plan, it had great goals. And now that it's been in operation a few years, I think the, I think it's acceptable, and I don't think it's a, it's a, it's a loss or a defeat to look at the plan and realize that we can learn from it. We have learned the importance of written procedures and policies. We've learned about security and money handling. We've learned what's important in audits and so on. And I think the existence of Compass has, to this point, perhaps complemented the standard auditing systems that we have in place here in the city. But it doesn't seem to be carrying enough weight with us to justify its expense, which is slightly over two hundred thousand dollars a year. So just to make that clear, that Compass is not in this budget request. Furthermore, the Native Sun News funding for two thousand sixteen has been removed. Mayor Quaker and this council in two thousand fourteen approved funding of the Native Sun News for forty thousand dollars to print city council minutes. And that's been done, and there was various reasons given at the time. And frankly, this appears to be an unnecessary duplication of efforts. We have eight hundred Native Sun newspapers produced each week. And we have somewhere around nine thousand Rapid City journals produced each day. And so we're getting far greater coverage in the Rapid City Journal than we could ever get in the Native Sun News. And I don't believe it's justified to do both. So that's a cost of forty thousand dollars per year. Now, I have an alternative, I have a couple of alternative ideas in mind for the use of this money, which I'll bring forward at the appropriate time. I, I'm not ready to produce a, a plan at this moment. But for now, just know this is not funded for two thousand sixteen. Our projected revenue, I apologize, but we didn't put the dollar amounts on each bar. But you can see that our sources of revenue, property tax, sales tax, user fees, grants, contributions, and other revenue. Other revenue is interest earned, court fees, recovery of direct expenses, surplus sales, special assessments, and so on. We have a projected revenue of about a hundred and fifty-six million dollars this year. City council priorities. I believe that in past years, we get to hear the city council priorities mainly during the budget hearings. And I think that's all gone fine. But in the future, I think it would be good for us to meet prior to the presentation of the budget. Frankly, I'd like to have your priorities in the budget at the time of the presentation. I think it might save some time on the other end getting the budget approved. So I've interviewed all of you individually, and I'll just speak generally about what you've told me about your priorities. Tree removal, additional snow removal in certain areas. Condition of the roads needs to be improved, neighborhood improvement projects, communication with constituents. A few of you lobbied for Robinsdale Park improvements, including equipment upgrades, lights, parking, and an access, suitable access road, potholes, several drainage projects, and the residential flood plain issues, which I thought was a good one and one that has a significant impact on a, on a select neighborhood or two in our city. And then code enforcement. So those are the ones that came out in our conversations. But I have a priority for you that I just want you to think about. This is the part, this is the part where I plant a seed for you. And then, subliminally, you take it through the budget process, and then you do what I think is the right thing. And that is, frankly, in this budget for two thousand sixteen is a raise for the city council members that equals about three point two-five percent, or about forty-three, or four hundred and thirty dollars per council member. Four hundred and thirty dollars. So that means a total of four thousand three hundred dollars for the year. Now, we're talking about a budget here of a hundred and fifty-six million dollars. It was hard to balance this budget. The original budget requests came in two million dollars over the projected revenue. There was some adjusting and using of undesigned cash to seal that up and balance the budget. So I'm just gonna let you know that in the end, when it comes time for you to make your decisions about the budget, don't consider foregoing your own raise to try to help people in Rapid City out. I believe you can help them out in a better way if you allow these positions to be paid. I mean, you're the lowest-paid city employees out of all of them. And I know that there are some of you that work forty hours and some that work less per week. Some of you don't even make minimum wage. And it's, you didn't get into this job about the money. It had nothing to do with the money. But the fact of the matter is, you folks will not be on the city council forever. There are prospective city council members out there in the world, out there in our community, that will want to do this job someday. And I think with just a few hundred more dollars per year, we can help to eliminate the possible roadblock that no one's gonna give their twenty or thirty hours a week for a thousand dollars a month. So I just want you to, to know that it's important to me, in my opinion, it's important, it's important that we allow the council to have raises and don't go through that process as we have sometimes in the past. So now, onto the overall budget. Here's the two thousand sixteen budget in comparison to the last two years. So it looks like we've added, and we have added, eight million dollars onto the annual budget. Let me tell you what that eight million dollars is for. That includes ten garbage trucks for the solid waste at three point eight million dollars. So this is the enterprise fund, and I know you know this, but I'm describing this for those who don't know. Solid waste and the landfill is an enterprise fund, and they pay their own way. This money is not coming out of the general fund, it's coming out of their enterprise fund. Next, we have several airport repairs and renovations. The most expensive, expensive of which is a multi-area ramp improvement project worth five and a half million dollars. This is ninety percent grant-funded. So even though it's ninety percent grant-funded, these numbers appear in our budget and appear that we're spending eight million more dollars. It is, but our revenue is also going up by that ninety percent. Equipment replacements at the airport for seven hundred seventy-five thousand, a new escalator for four hundred thousand, ten-unit T-hangers for one million dollars, and a wayfinding sign project, hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. So that is the overall summary of that eight million dollar increase in the budget. Now, again, this is, this is something here where I'm not going to ask for action on this tonight, but I want to speak about this so that you'll know what I'm thinking and so that we can get on the same page someday. This is about how the, the two pennies of sales tax that Rapid City gets is broken out. Eight percent of each penny is taken from the utility support fund. Of the first penny, then ninety-two percent goes to the general fund. Of the second penny, ninety-two percent is split between the CIP and Vision Fund. So this is okay, this has been working. I know there was good reasons for all of this, I'm not bashing this particular system. But the system causes us to operate on ninety-two percent of, ninety-two percent of one penny for the general fund. It creates sixteen percent of both pennies to go towards a utility expense, which is truly a CIP, capital improvements expenditure. It leaves ninety-two percent of the second penny split fifty-fifty between CIP and Vision. Now, we should, I think we all would agree that times change and circumstances change. And all of us up here at the dais, including myself, have run for election and have heard certain issues at election time. And so how many times have you heard about roads, potholes, infrastructure, drainage, and so on? We have to be ready and willing to embrace change and explore some flexibility in how these two pennies are split. That's all I'm suggesting here. There are several options here, and I'll come back at some point with a proposal with several options for you to look at on how we can build up the CIP fund a little bit without decimating Vision Funds. A few percent here and a few percent there can give us millions more towards CIP and still leave millions for Vision. We just have to know, and there's eleven of us here, there's ten of you that will vote on it. And so we have to find out where your comfort level is and hear, hear from you. And, and so that's why we're not doing this tonight. This is a seed planting exercise for me. So let's go on to the two categories then, the payment in lieu of taxes and the interdepartmental charges. Payment in lieu of taxes is where an enterprise fund records expenditures that it requires to operate their business, the closest thing the city has to a, a business. And we get to calculate the cost of doing business. That's the purpose of this category. So you see which expenditures were under those departments. Related to this, interdepartmental charges. Again, another way for the finance office to, to show costs for actual services performed by other departments. And I'm informed by the finance officer that in, in, in the finance world, this is still being touted as the best practices in government finance, to use interdepartmental charges in this way, to have an accurate accounting of the books. Now, and as I'm trying to understand all of this, this is, this is how I see it. The payment in lieu of taxes and the interdepartmental charges create a conduit between general fund and enterprise funds in order to be able to transfer money from one to the other. Because, you know, you can't make money out at the landfill and use it to buy something for a general fund department. So this is a way of creating transfers that are justified and make sense and show us the cost of doing business. Here are the two thousand sixteen proposed expenditures by department. And there's one additional category up there at the eleven o'clock position. That's the other category, the CIP, Vision, and Community Investments makes up twenty-one million dollars of this. And similar to the pie chart, pie chart I showed earlier with the employee distribution, it's similar in that Public Works has thirty-nine percent of the expenditures and goes down the line from there. Police and Fire and so on. So a hundred and fifty-six million eighty-three thousand eight hundred seventy-seven dollars and sixty-three cents. Here's a list of the, the community investments from the general fund. Some are operational type of expenditures such as detox and dispatch, search and rescue. Others are quality of life, the arts, and other human services, and so on. So there is an increase of not quite a couple hundred thousand dollars for two thousand sixteen in the community investments. Then we're on to unencumbered cash and reserves. And we can see that to keep our fifteen percent reserve in two thousand sixteen, we've used some undesigned cash. And that leaves us with a balance today of two million one hundred twenty-six thousand nine hundred seventy-nine dollars in undesigned cash. Some of this money was used to balance this budget, but still maintaining the fifteen percent in reserves. Okay, and now for this one. This two thousand sixteen budget request includes taking the CPI, the Consumer Price Index, which has, which is determined, the percentage of which is determined by the Bureau of Labor and Statistics. So the Consumer Price Index increase comes as part of the county property tax, the assessment. It is meant to fund increases due to inflation. Now, the city has to buy a number of products and services to do its job and provide service to our citizens and visitors. We have to deal with inflation just like everyone else. And it's pretty clear to see. Now, there's a, there's a theory out there that we don't have to take CPI because we have growth. So the growth in this case in two thousand sixteen, that revenue is projected to be a couple hundred thousand dollars. The CPI is also a couple hundred thousand dollars. But what we're missing with that theory is that growth causes the expenditure of additional services to those areas that are growing. So growth really needs to cover growth. And then we're stuck with inflation. Now, council resolution, two thousand twelve dash zero zero four, made CPI acceptance a separate question to be answered in public about whether or not you're going to accept the CPI portion of the tax increase. And there's been several years where you have denied accepting that tax increase. So what I see when I, when I talk about this is the county, the, the county, county tax funds come in the door. They're coming up to the front doors of City Hall, and we stop them there. They're coming with our revenue from the CPI, and we stop them. And we have to say, we're not sure if we're gonna take this or not. We have to have a public meeting about it first and then decide. Okay, so then enters politics. And nobody likes taxes. In fact, again, going back to your last election, how many people mentioned taxes? Well, everyone. No one likes taxes. But this CPI portion of the tax, which by the way, this year for Rapid City has been calculated at one point five percent. This is a very small number. And I know there's arguments to that. And I know there's arguments to that too, because it compounds year after year after year. But I said earlier, Rapid City has a revenue problem. Part of the reason we have a revenue problem is because we're doing this to ourselves. Now, I read the resolution, and in the resolution, it states that this resolution will help with transparency. And I agree, it's transparent, but there is a, a line between being transparent and unnecessarily drawing a target on your back for scrutiny. Taxes is a very emotional issue. Someone who doesn't pay attention to government for 364 days a year, on that last year, they're going to say, my taxes are too high. I understand this. But I think accepting the CPI to handle inflation would be a far more honest and upright method of us being able to pay our bills so that we can do our jobs and serve the public. This will perhaps keep us from thinking about implementing other fees and charges to try to make up the difference. What I've seen with the city budget for years is that we go through the same exercise where we're short, we're always short, and we're always trying to cut, cut, cut. And many politicians run on the fact that they didn't raise your taxes. Well, their taxes did get raised by the county. County will raise your taxes if you're, if the, if the economy is good enough for you to get reevaluated in the property value, your property goes up, your taxes are going up. That's just the way it is. Whether we say yes or no to the CPI is going to mean a dozen dollars to somebody else. I mean, literally a few dollars here and there. But those taxes are going to go up. So I will, at some point, bring that resolution back to you and ask you to rescind it. And I will take all the heat for doing so. I know it's not going to be popular, but I believe it's good government, I believe it's the right thing. Because for me, studying this budget and being involved in past budgets, I can tell you this, that I think we're beyond the point where we can say, people over projects. As you can see from the budget presentation, the most expensive item in this budget is wages. If we want to continue to do more with less, we're going to have to start targeting and eliminating jobs from the city, eliminating services, and that's not a threat. I mean, with, somebody always says that during the budget year. I'm not saying that to put you in a bad position, but I think the next logical step is to start looking at eliminating some positions to save that money. I'm going to ask you someday, fairly soon, to eliminate this resolution, and let's, let's get down to doing our jobs and try to fix that revenue problem we have. So, here's a summary. This budget is up 6 percent. $156,83,000 for projected revenue and expenditures. The CPI is included in this budget. The new FTE requests that are in this budget are a half of an employee for the mayor's office. I took that at face value, that was in the budget for Mayor Quaker, I did not question it. The office helps as it's needed. I've had 10 days on the job, so I can't be the authority on that today. One FTE in the swim center, which is the general fund, one FTE on the golf course, which is the enterprise fund, and six police officers contingent on grant funding. And that's it for the requested FTEs. So that's the end of this presentation, there's certainly more budget detail that you'll have by tomorrow. Answer any questions?
Thank you, Mr. President. And I probably have comments, questions, and as I absorb some of this, I will, I'm sure I have more. But I recognize something on there that you didn't touch on, and that was a change of $80,000 from zero to $80,000 on destination Rapid City?
Correct.
Is there, okay. And I'll further probably ask you why that is, if we're going to take an increase in property taxes by your suggestion, why we would spend another $80,000. You mentioned the golf course as an enterprise fund. This last, it was less than a month or two ago, I questioned the bill, the thoughts that we sent, spent general funds of $100,000 when you were asking about. I think, Mr. Mayor, and I appreciate the fact that we're going to squeeze you, but I'm going to squeeze you today a little bit, just to get you used to it. We talk about your, your opinion on revenues and expenses, and we all have those opinions. And we talk about revenue versus expenses, but yet, I agree that, and I, and I've had this conversation with you, that I completely agree that we all sit up here and run on platforms and talk about fixing potholes, fixing streets. You mentioned the CIP and Vision Funds, which I applaud you for tremendously to, and I think that it does take a lot of, if, if you're willing to take the, the politics out of some of these decision makings, I think our council can do a great job, as I had mentioned before. I think that, under your leadership, we can do a great job too, as long as we all understand that there are going to be political decisions made, that's just the nature of the beast, but also understanding that there's going to be tough decisions. Yeah, you know, if I'm going to even entertain the thought of raising, I think that the people of Rapid City and the state of South Dakota are, their wages are at the second lowest in the nation. So when we think about where we're spending money and how we spend our money, I exactly agree with you that it's about a priority. I think Alderman Wright had sent out an email with his wishes on priorities, and I applaud him for that. I think that, you know, that's what we need to have the conversation about. Where are our priorities and what makes sense? And I'd mentioned this to you before about a football team, or a baseball team, or a, or a basketball team that's going to go to the national championships, the world championships. These guys all do one thing correctly, and that's the basics. That's the basics. They can tackle and block and play defense and offense, like, that's how they get there. I don't think that, if there's any opportunity here, I think that's the biggest opportunity for your city, whether you want to call it a revenue problem or an expense problem, whatever it is, I don't, I don't see a problem. I see opportunities that people make good, well-thought-out decisions and have a reason for those decisions. And so I do applaud you in that arena, and if that's the direction we're going to go, I, I'm very excited about that direction. Obviously, we'll have some challenges ahead of us. You talked about CIP and the Vision Fund, which was a discussion that we had on this council prior to you being here, and how that, that item is, is one fund now, and I, I think that you probably understand that. If we're looking at, looking for opportunities there, which I'm assuming you're going to bring forward in the future, that it's a great opportunity for a revenue item that, if we do it correctly, can, can save, that, that's a lot of money, and you can look at the 150,000, $150 million budget, when you're talking about a Vision Fund, that's $11 million a year alone. So I, I'm excited about the opportunities, but I also don't, I don't believe that we have a revenue problem, or I believe that it's an opportunity problem, and opportunity for us and you to make some good educated decisions and say, this is what we're going to do. You know, if it costs me the next election, I'm sorry, but I'm, I'm telling you, I'll think this out, and I'll make my decisions best, based on the best information available. So I appreciate it, and I'm sure I'll let the other people talk, so I'll shut up. Thanks.
Thank you. We'll now go to Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mayor, on this, and you already stated, so I'm just going to restate it again, that 90 percent of this is based on the past administration because you've only been in office about 10 days. So I understand that, but a couple of things that were identified in the previous years and were slowly being addressed and then not addressed at all, is one of the items that you brought up, and that was the pelt or payment in lieu of taxes and the interdepartmental charges. And what was brought forward and recognized four years ago was that there are no real common sense tied to those charges. And there was some attempt to correct that, and then it kind of died off, and no one really kind of led the charge on that. So just for a clarifying question, since this looked like we were looking at an increase in this proposed budget of the interdepartmental charges, I'm asking for clarification that, again, no more work has been done on making some common sense into these interdepartmental charges for this budget?
Certainly not by me.
Okay, thank you. And then on the CPI, because I know we'll get into it in the budget hearings, and that's when I can ask some more very specific questions, but on the CPI, the only question I have at this time is that you did mention the CPI in general. And is your proposed 2016 budget only taking in the 2016 or 2015 CPI, it's not doing any clawbacks?
That's correct.
Okay, so it's just taking the current year?
Yes.
All right, thank you. I yield the floor.
Thank you. We'll now go to Alderman Chad Lewis, thanks.
I can make a motion to acknowledge the budget.
We've got a motion by Lewis and a second by Lorente to acknowledge and acknowledge the mayor's budget presentation, and we'll go to Alderman Jerry Wright.
Thank you, Mayor, and I'll support that motion, but I just want to say that in our future discussions in the budget, we've all talked about infrastructure, and we've heard numbers from our engineering, Public Works Department on how much we should be spending on streets and how much we are. And I want staff and you, and all of us to be prepared to discuss that shortfall and how we're going to meet it. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other lights in the queue, we have a motion on the floor to acknowledge the mayor's budget presentation. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Those opposed? Motion by Nordstrom, second by Drew DeCher.